All right. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of September 3, 2025. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, are available online or at the Planning Department in Room 213. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. In addition, a copy of all staff reports and other relative relevant documents for the matters to be considered by the Planning Commission are included in a binder that's located on the dais and is available to the public for review. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cellphones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note, the Planning Commission's action on today's items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held August 20, 2025. Is there a motion?
Oh, I move to approve the minutes.
Second, Rodenberg.
Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Epstein.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask now that Shelley read all of the consent agenda items into record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there's anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Item 1.1, Conferencing Plan Conformance 25007 for the Bridges Conservation Easement to Review Esticon Formance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Conferencing Plan. A request for a permanent conservation easement from Rezak Properties LLC to the City of Lincoln to preserve the flood storage capacity and natural features on property generally located at Southwest 33rd Street and West Bow Bridge Road. Next item, 1.2, Text Amendment 25010, amending the Lincoln Municipal Code, Chapter 27.06.020B under Classification of Use Types, types to allow a lot or tract in the AG or AGR District to have up to three main buildings or uses if one of the main buildings is a dwelling and all height and lot requirements are met. Next item, 1.3, Miscellaneous 25011, for an amendment to the 2050 Long-Range Transportation Plan to update the costs for rural road projects and updated limits for project ID 102 due to completed paving under the fiscally constrained rural road and bridge capital projects. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on these items?
There are none.
Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting these sites to be disclosed?
There are none.
If there's anyone here wishing to speak on these consent agenda items, please stand and state that item.
We do not see anyone here that would like to speak on the consent agenda items. We would now entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I would move to approve the consent agenda, Campbell.
Second, Edens.
Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Approved, six to zero.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearings. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present their testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like to distribute to the Planning Commission members or include as part of the public record, please provide them to the clerk. Each person testifying should state their name, address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The clerk will use the light system to help aid your timing for your testimony. The lights will appear on the monitors provided. The clerk will indicate when you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. The red light indicates that your five minutes have expired. Once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
Item 4.1, Conferencing Plan Amendment 25004, to amend the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Conferencing Plan to adopt the Belmont Neighborhood Subarea Plan, which includes a strategic vision for enhancements to the Belmont, Atlanta's neighborhoods and their framework for achieving that vision. The subarea plan is generally bounded by I-180 on the west, Superior Street on the north, North 27th Street on the east, and Corner Husker Highway on the south. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed in this application?
There are none.
Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
There are none.
Good afternoon. We're going to do a joint presentation to kick this off today. Yeah, some exciting action. Andrew Theroff with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street.
And Jennifer Hyatt with Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street, Suite 205.
So this is a really exciting application. This is our second subarea plan for this year that we're proposing at the comp plan. So that's something we don't do a lot of years is have the chance to do two of these. So that's really great. This one is a little different than the University Place Plan you saw a few months ago. This one is, this plan was done as a partnership between this Planning Department and Urban Development Department, and then we also partnered with an architect, BNIM, out of Kansas City, and Sinclair Hilli. There were also some other community partners as well.
Yeah, so as Andrew said, we don't normally have the opportunity to do two subarea plans because of the intense effort to do the public input and it takes a lot of staff time. But thanks to our partners with the Community Health Endowment of Lincoln and the Community Foundation, or the Lincoln Community Foundation, they were able to provide funding for us to do this work with a consultant that Andrew mentioned, BNIM, out of Kansas City, in partnership with Sinclair Hilli. And then also I want to give a special shout out to Emily Koopman, who is in the room with the Belmont Community Center, because without her absolute intrepid efforts, I don't think that this plan would be as successful as it was. So the financing, of course, supported the consultant, but it also did a lot more than that. It helped us support the engagement itself. So we, with the financing, we were able to provide dinner for every single one of the events that Andrew, or the open houses that Andrew is going to describe in a little bit. We were also, through the Belmont Community Center, able to provide childcare support. So if people were, you know, hey, we want the insight of children in the neighborhood. So because they were able to be there with the support of childcare, we were able to get some unique childhood insight into that as well.
So we have a few slides that'll just walk through the process and give a very high level look at the recommendations. This was a community-driven process. We had a core group, which was made up of city staff and then the organizations that Jennifer was just talking about.
As well as some neighborhood, um, community members.
Yep. We had a stakeholder group that's, that'll be touched on in a future slide. We had several open house events, and then we also had online engagement. So if you were in the neighborhood and wanted to provide input, we made it as easy as possible to provide that meaningful input. So in terms of the big community open houses, we had four of those. We tried to line those up with other community events, and that was a really successful strategy because it brought in people who maybe weren't just coming just to go to a Belmont, a subarea plan open house, but they were there for some, you know, something else going out to school. You can see we did one with parent teacher conferences. We did one with the city build project at Belmont where kids built miniature cities out of like recycled material. We also did one at an event called the Belmont Block Party. That was a really fun kind of kickoff to summer event. And then we did one, an event that was in the middle of July, that was a family swim and then a movie night. So we were able to essentially attach ourselves to these events that were already really popular and that helped get us quite a bit of input at these open houses. Beyond that, we also did an online survey that was posted several times throughout this process with emails and promotion for the survey.
There was also a website on planning's webpage, so every presentation that we had put together was available on that website where you could also link to the survey. So if people needed to access that information, they had it available online as well.
So our stakeholder group is ultimately the group that guided this whole process. It was a, it was a real comprehensive group that covered all different facets of the neighborhood. So you can see there was 22 members, plus a translator, plus a childcare provider, as Jennifer mentioned. It had neighborhood residents, folks involved with the schools, representatives from community-serving organizations and businesses. We actually had a high school student, which was really cool because as you can imagine, these processes, these processes, we don't always hear a lot from teens for what they want in the neighborhood, but we, we did have a student, which was, was really great. We had representatives from faith-based organizations, and then of course we had representatives from different City of Lincoln departments. That group met four times throughout the spring and early summer. So a few takeaways from this process. The one thing we heard a lot and almost immediately when we said, like at the first meeting, what are things you want to see improved in the neighborhood, was street safety for pedestrian and bicyclists, both within the neighborhood but also leaving the neighborhood. So, you know, 14th Street, Bridge over Corner Husker, the Bridge over I-180, those were things that were immediately identified as really, really dangerous and unpleasant to be on as a pedestrian or bicyclist. So that's something that we will be addressing in the plan. A desire to see community-serving businesses, neighborhood-scale-type businesses, support programs and resources for homeowners. We heard a lot about, you know, the age of homes and wanting, wanting a support system where we can maybe help fix up homes and, you know, revitalize some of the residential areas.
Another key takeaway is that the people who live in this neighborhood love their neighborhood. So of course I was aware that this was a neighborhood, but I did not know the community that had been built, so it was a delight to get to discover that. And I also thought that one of the things that really came out a lot was that they really enjoy the diversity of their neighborhood and want to celebrate that, which I think they're already doing great steps to do, but we can always help with that. Another thing is that they want support to healthy living. They want to be able to access healthy food, healthcare, safe outdoor environments. That goes back a lot to the transportation options and trying to provide multimodal transportation throughout the neighborhood as well. And then they have an excellent park system. Both Roper and Belmont Parks are there, and the neighborhood really likes to spend time outside, and they would like to see more opportunities to be able to engage in their parks, engage with nature through those outdoor activities, to contribute to that healthier and more sustainable lifestyle. So as we went throughout our open houses and the online surveys and took in that data and listened to the neighborhood, five themes really started emerging that we wanted to try and address and capture in the redevelopment, or in the subarea plan, sorry, urban development. Sometimes that happens. One of those is community building. So as I stated before, it's already a really strong community, but they want to make sure that they take what's already, that foundation that they already have and be able to start elevating that community building. Health and recreation came through, nature and environment came through, the mobility and transportation that we've already talked about a few times, and then as always comes out through this is housing and development. So through the distillation of those five key themes, we were able to come up with quite a few strategies. You guys have seen the plan, there's over 30, I think, strategies that are in the plan, but we wanted to highlight some of the top six that really kind of came out quite a bit, and then also that we could potentially support if we were able to bring a redevelopment plan to this body moving forward. So the first one is developing that safe, multimodal access at bridges and major connection points. In our very first open house meeting, we talked about the 14th Street Bridge over Adams, and one of the members of the open house looked at me and said, have you walked across it though? And the truth of the matter is that I had not actually walked across the 14th Street Bridge. I have driven across it plenty of times, but it was an appropriate question for the planning staff that's coming in and asking these questions. So I did, in fact, walk over it, and it's not necessarily an experience I would like to replicate. So what you guys have already heard through the transportation plan or are probably already aware is that our transportation team had already identified 14th Street as a bridge that needs some love. So one of the things that we would, if we were able to bring a redevelopment plan forward to you, we would like to help assist in making sure that the pedestrian facilities on that are elevated so that the neighborhood has really good pedestrian activity across that bridge. We also heard from the state of Nebraska that they are looking at the Adams Street Bridge, so that's exciting. Another thing that came through is that the community members love the Belmont Park. So at Belmont Park, there's Belmont Park, there's Belmont Recreation Center, Belmont Elementary, EduCare, and the Belmont Community Center. And the neighborhood refers to this as the Belmont Campus overall, and it is kind of the heart of the neighborhood. And the park is great, there's a pool that's there as well, there's playground, there's basketball equipment, but there's always a desire to see a more modern, accessible, multi-use facility in parks. That came through quite a bit. Expanding the Belmont Community Center as a central gathering place and community support center also rose to the top of our projects. People love the BCC. It was built in 1955. It is a cinder block building. It's got a gym in it that's got this really excellent, it's not a dome.
A vault?
Vault. We got told. Over the gym, it's really great, but it would be excellent if we could see an expansion of services that the BCC could provide. One of the things that came up a lot as well is installing and improving outdoor lighting at the parks and at the Belmont Community Center, although we did have one person share that if we are expanding the lights, they would love that they're not super bright lights in the park because there is residential all around it, and evidently they did have one very bright light at one time. But then also we could see this expansion through the pedestrian corridors, lighting is important. As Andrew had talked about, homeownership is really important to the neighborhood too. There's a lot of pride in the fact that it's a primarily homeownership neighborhood, but sometimes it's really hard to do those extra repairs that you need on your home. So we would look at attempting to do some kind of a homeowner repair program. We would need to do a little more digging and a little more community input to see what that would look like. I know a tool library, like a tool lending library, was talked about, potentially developing that in partnership with a nonprofit like Neighborhood, or like Neighborhood Works Lincoln has been talking about doing those types of things, where if you don't have a lawnmower but you need to mow your lawn, you can go rent that to take care of that project or a specific saw, something like that. Our, and then my department, of course, has, or Urban Development Department, has some different home rehab programs that we've been introducing to the neighborhood to maybe see if we can get those programs in there as well. And then finally, Belmont School, Belmont Elementary School is right in the middle of the corridor. There are also, there's a middle school in the subarea plan as well, and so improving those existing bus stops in the neighborhood came out a lot. People mentioned it. And it's not necessarily revamping Star Trans route, that's Star Tan's role, but sometimes it's just a flag stuck in the side of the sidewalk. So if where we have appropriate right-of-way, we could help create some of those elevated bus shelters that really rose to the top as well.
With that, we'll take any questions. This is the staff and applicant team.
I would like to go first. Any questions? That was a very thorough presentation. Excellent. Thank you.
My name is Virginia Geiger, and I live at 3924 North 17th Street in Belmont. I am, my husband and I built the house there, and I'm still living there 57 years later. And forgive me, but this is my debut speaking in front of everyone, so I might read more than I present. It has really been my honor to represent my neighbors in this project. I was kind of dragged into it and have really embraced it and, and see the importance. The efforts made by this committee to actively involve us, the Belmont community, in deciding the scope and the strategies were extensive, as you said, with all, you heard with all the open houses and, and the opportunities, and I made sure that my neighbors were heard, went, so that their voices would be heard. I would drag them there if I had to. The work done by city planners and the architects was truly a collaborative effort between the professionals and the community members. The open houses were very well attended. Residents were highly engaged throughout this process, and they provided, I felt very thoughtful and productive input into the process. But most importantly, their voices were heard by this committee, and their ideas served as the foundation for this plan. I'm proud to say that I was a part of the plan and that it has been a primary goal for the restoration of Belmont to the vibrant community that I remember when I moved there 57 years ago. I mean, we had what was called a Belmont Plaza, and that term itself describes the vitality that is long since gone, and so to see this project perhaps bring that back to life is very exciting for me after 57 years. But like many of my neighbors, I do share some doubts that the plan will really happen. And that was voiced to me by many of my neighbors when I said, go to these open houses, go to that, and they're like, yeah, yeah, but okay, that'll never happen. Belmont has been overlooked for many years. I've witnessed that, I've lived there, I've seen other parts of the city be revitalized and redeveloped, and Belmont's still there, but we are, as we call ourselves, Belmont Proud. We are very proud of our neighborhood, and the thought of it being revitalized is just extremely exciting to me. So I'm hoping that you recognize the importance of this to the people here that live in Belmont, as well as the City of Lincoln in general, and that you are willing to approve this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony and support. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Well, we'd like other testimonies of support if there's anyone that would like to speak.
Hi, my name is Emily Koopman. I'm the Executive Director at the Belmont Community Center. That's 3335 North 12th Street. I also got to be a part of this project. It has been a really cool and collaborative process, and as the community center, our mission is to, literally it says, adapt to the cultural, recreational, social needs of the community. And in this project, we've been able to do that by just being kind of the broker of information and the collaborator. I've been able to attend meetings with Virginia and planners and architects. I've been able to coordinate stakeholders, and this has, you saw on the presentation kind of all the open houses and the core meetings and the stakeholder meetings, but like Virginia said, what you, you haven't been able to see on a slide is just the one-off conversations we've had, the coffees we've hosted, the emails we've exchanged, the ways that we've reached out and given people information even today to submit more public comments if they have it, or watch the live commission meeting here, you know? So all those kind of communications have really been able to be done through this process and through the way that we did this process, so collaboratively with community funders, with planners, with neighborhood organizations and residents. I think, again, some things I would just highlight about the plan that I'm really excited about. In the five different kind of key areas and goals, I really also just saw really three themes emerge that have been talked about, but connectedness and communication, our, our community really wants to stay connected and communicative about this project, about what we see in this project. We just have really good momentum on, on how we're communicating with each other and trying to listen to one another, and I appreciate about that, about this. All of that is due because we have just such great neighborhood pride. Belmont Proud is, is very true to form, and we care a lot about not only our spaces and the ways that we're living and safety and amongst nature and amongst each other in our homes and in our neighborhood, but also just what tangible resources our neighbors and our community has. So again, just the highlighting of the Belmont Plaza and the Belmont Community Center and ways to, to again, just create more mutual flourishing is kind of the, kind of the vibes I'm going with in terms of what I see for Belmont and what we have all seen and felt in what our vision is, in terms of, yeah, just mutual flourishing and meeting those tangible needs, being proud of our neighborhood and staying connected and communicating with each other. Again, we have talked about things from farmers markets to lighting. We have talked about just not a gravel parking lot for the sake of our neighbors and for scooping and the ways that we volunteer for each other. And I think something I also want to bring up at the community center in this process is with the help of our community funders, Lincoln Community Foundation and the Community Health Endowment, we were able to still provide the critical resources that we are providing in our neighborhoods. So we are a licensed childcare center. Throughout this process, we have gotten to step five and step up to quality. We have been able to serve weekend meals through a collaboration with, we can do this on the weekends. So we're serving meals to kids, we're doing early childhood education and, and providing childcare. We are providing facility use to our community through our gym and our ball field, through AA meetings, all these things. We were able to do all those things and... We were able to do all those things and be so collective and collaborative in this work because they invested also in the community center itself. And so, as that is part of the plan that's being presented, we are just really excited to continue to invest and be collaborative because we know it takes both and that we have a lot of great assets and resources in our neighborhood, a lot of great collaborators, a lot of champions and strategies that we want to employ. And so, we're just excited to see where it goes next and continue this good connected process.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other testimony and support? We did receive a lot of what you mentioned, letters through the portal for the commissioners, so thank you for that also. Is there any testimony that is in a neutral capacity? Any testimony in opposition? Staff questions? Commissioners? None, okay. And the staff is also the applicant. Anything else you'd like to talk about? Okay?
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Evans.
Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move that we approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment 25004.
Second, Edens.
Discussion.
I can, I'll be quick.
Commissioner Maugh?
Sometimes. I frequent the area often with my work with Educare. And so, I know based on their mission and what they try to do along with the community center and the residents there, this is pretty great to hear. So, I'm in full support and glad that we're finally getting a plan and resources to support the area.
Excellent. Commissioner Edens?
So, I was raised in Belmont. That's, I'm from Landon's addition. We were the seventh house in that neighborhood. The closest park was Belmont with the Big Rocket at the time. The community center was the library. That has a piece of my heart, that will always have a piece of my heart. My friends' parents are still there. I'm not trying to age myself too much. Anyhow, I am in so, so much support of this and would love to see Belmont shine and have their moment of glory and 100% behind this. Thank you guys for all the hard work.
Thank you again. That was well done, and it was excellent to hear the testimony, so thank you, everyone. Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Approve seven to zero. Next item is Item 4.2, Comprehensive Plan Compliance 25008. To review aesthetic performance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, it proposed one and six-year Lancaster County Road and Bridge Construction Program for fiscal years 2026 and 2027. Are there any expedited communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expedited communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of the site to be disclosed?
I see none. Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, here today to present our one and six road program. I'd just like to start by introducing you a little bit to the size of our program. We are the largest county program in the state of Nebraska by actually quite a ways. So, that program consists of 289 bridges, approximately 6,900 pipe culverts, and 1,000 box culverts, as well as about 1,400 miles, centerline miles of road. Some of the challenges that we face going forward in '25, '26 are continued supply chain issues and tariff concerns driving up project costs. We have now not been able to get a snowplow or a dump truck delivered to county engineering in over two years because of supply chain shortages. And the prices of those, of course, during that time period have increased three or four times. And so, it's very difficult to budget those and hold that money. Wondering, like, are they really, are trucks really going to show up this year? Because quite frankly, if I had a boyfriend that lied to me about anything, as much as truck delivery people have lied to me about these trucks, he would be dumped.
No pun intended.
Very quickly. All the puns intended, all the puns intended, Ms. Joy. We continue to have challenges with vehicles and equipment out of service. Again, that really goes back to the parts issue and shipping with these parts. When you have waits that sometimes are in excess of eight to 12 weeks for parts, it is a concern to my operation for resiliency. And then, lastly, we continue to have challenges with open positions at the County Engineers Department. I also wanted to talk to you about the challenge of construction inflation. And it's been interesting the last couple of years that you will hear that construction inflation has slowed. And that is indeed true. But we're still adding geometrically inflation on top of what was really big inflation to start off with from the COVID era. So, 2020, if we call that kind of our zero point and carried forward to last year, inflation would be about 40% over that time period, in particular for construction. We anticipate with current projections that 2030 will be 50% more expensive than 2020 numbers. I think that's significant. This is a slide that I stole from a colleague in Kansas. I think it really conveys construction inflation very well, so we can all kind of see what's happening there. One of our other challenges in Lancaster County is our continued challenge of pipe repair and maintenance. Our annual program replaces about 65 pipe culverts a year. That's up in the last decade. We were replacing about eight when I started at Lancaster County. However, it's still not enough to keep up with the needs. And so, we currently need to replace 943 pipe culverts around the county. If you look at the dashboard and you see all the red, you know that the red touches everybody. And that, again, is a big challenge to the resilience of the system. Today, I did bring with me, too, if you're interested, larger maps to kind of see what's going on. I know some of us are visually challenged these days. I wanted to point out that we are making progress, in particular with our scour critical and scour susceptible bridges. Scour, of course, is erosion around the area of the bridge. And so, that means the soil's no longer stable on the bridge approach, which is really important. We want you to be able to get to the bridge, right? We started off during the critical bomb cyclone, right after the critical bomb cyclone in 2019, with 58 bridge sites that were in danger. Currently today, we're down to 27. The red dots that you see, of course, are the very significant dots. Those are bridges that in order to remain open, require a plan of action, an emergency plan of action. And of course, that is cumbersome for our department. For example, this weekend, when we received in the northern part of the county more than four inches of rain, that means that all of those red bridges, I will have to do a scour critical inspection and recertify them to be open this week. That's how close to the edge they are. And that, of course, is an additional resiliency problem to our county. We're really lucky, 2019, after that bomb cyclone, I closed a number of bridges. We got to the number of 42 bridges closed around the county. It was critical. We're now down to one. This one bridge has been closed since last summer during a really bad storm, and it experienced some erosion. You can see the picture, how significant that is. There is supposed to be soil behind that bridge and all the way down. In fact, the beams that you see touching the water are only embedded into the soil three feet. So, that is of concern. We would not want a grain truck to go over this in this condition. That is why we had the critical finding that this bridge was a clear and present danger and closed it to the public. Our bridge overall health board is looking a little better. You may note that we're down from about 28 bridges that were rated poor on a good, fair, poor to five. I'm super excited to let you know that I think there's a possibility in the next couple of years that we may be able to get down to two or three. Should we be able to stay consistent with our funding as we move forward. One of the bridge projects that we're going to work on in our next year is Bridge F201. Super exciting. It's about 25 feet from the jurisdiction of the City of Lincoln on Arbor Road, North 27th Street. We are doing this as a federal aid bridge. It will be funded with MPO funding, and it will be a bridge that can last us hopefully the next 100 years and improve growing north Lincoln. And then the bridge I just mentioned earlier, here's another shot from down in the channel. We're going to do some major channel rehab to this and stabilize it so that we can hopefully get this bridge to last in the future. By the way, this is a bridge that was, it's really not that old. It's from the 1980s. But in the 1980s, I don't know, Mr. Campbell, you may recall that we tried to be really good stewards of the taxpayer money. And so, those bridges that we were designing when I was an intern, we always tried to make them a little shorter. And we know now that you made the bridge shorter, you made the channel shorter, and overall, you did not help the drainage of the situation. You made a problem worse, and now I have these bridges that are too short, and I experience these sort of maintenance issues with them. Bridge G222, which is located on 98th Street, just north of Highway 6, is a major bridge. Super fun to point out, you may notice the little diagonal steel that goes into the water, that is actually an icebreaker. And when I first came to Lancaster County, I had this moment where I was like, "Why in the heck did we build icebreakers on all these bridges on Salt Creek?" And then, of course, we experienced the bomb cyclone of 2019, and I knew exactly why they were there. This bridge, we've actually jacked up twice and extended the beams into the bottom of Salt Creek as Salt Creek has dropped considerably over the last several years. The creek has gotten deeper and wider, just like the rest of creeks in Lancaster County. This is my only capital improvement project for the year. So, when you see this 2.6 million, actually $3 million because I'm replacing some other structures around it, that was the only money allocated to all 1,400 miles of Lancaster County's roads this year. I'm going to make the wild statement that that's just not enough. And I will have to be out there continuing to aggressively find additional grant funding and hope that I can convince people to put more general fund money into our capital improvement program. This is Bridge K144. I wanted to be sure to show you a picture of it. These are standard bridge maintenance challenges that we have in Lancaster County. This is from the bridge being salted, and the salt kind of rolling off the side of the bridge creates some issues with the concrete here. This is the bridge by the Lancaster County Event Center. So, of course, this is a significant bridge. Hey, it might also be about 25 feet outside of the City of Lincoln's jurisdiction. I don't know how that keeps happening. It turns out that we like to give each other bridges in government. I didn't know that before I was a county engineer, but if anyone really wants a bridge, I will find a way to give you one. This is the list of bridge projects that we intend to work on in FY 2026. It includes our federal aid bridge and several of our bridges that are under design. As we look out in the years two through six, this is what it looks like. I'd like to remind the commission that these are, this is a, of course, fiscally constrained plan. So, this by no means represents the needs of the county. It represents that money projected forward in years two through six. To move on to the roads, and I also have a really exciting roadmap for you guys, should you be interested. Lancaster County has 43 miles of dirt. That means it's never been rocked, it's never been graded. It probably also means that it has some challenges to it, and that's why. You may notice that if you like kept these and put them all next to each other, and you're like, "Wow, how did Pam lose seven miles of dirt road?" And I would tell you that we've been systematically going out and closing those roads where it makes sense. So, if there's no homes on the road, if there's some environmental challenges to the road, like wetlands, saline wetlands, those sort of things, then we go ahead and we vacate that road. And that means that the ground goes to the adjacent landowners, and we take it off of our system. We're trying to be very responsible with what we maintain going into the future. And we're also trying to be good stewards of the environment as we go forward. Like, hey, if we had a dirt road through a wetland area, maybe we shouldn't have had a dirt road through a wetland area. We have just over 1,000 miles of gravel roads and about, and just under 300 miles of paved roads in Lancaster County. This is a map that I think is really important from a planning standpoint to talk about. This is the map of ADT, so average daily traffic. In green, more than 300 cars a day. In red, more than 400 cars a day. We know that once the gravel reaches about 300 cars a day, it's impossible for us to maintain it. In fact, last year, we did a study in our office of what it takes to maintain a gravel road with that 400-plus cars a day. And we figured that with the cost of labor and rock to maintain those roads, we could pave them every three to five years. So, that's significant to the program. That's why I'm going to continue to focus on this 20 miles. We have to get this 20 miles paved and connected to the city and other counties adjacent to us so that we can stop putting the maintenance in that we're putting in here. I want to talk a little bit about pavement maintenance. Over the last decade, we have aggressively maintained our pavement. Does that mean that I have conquered potholes? Absolutely not. Maybe someday, there'll be an engineer that conquers potholes on a system. But what I'd like to say is, I think we're way closer than we used to be. And so, of that 300 miles that I just talked to you about, when we first started rating our miles on a zero to 100 scale, we had almost 100 miles that were under that 80-point rating, which means they needed immediate maintenance. Through our numerous maintenance programs, we've got that number down this last year to about 35. So, that's significant progress, especially considering that our funding sources haven't increased in this area. I want to talk a little bit about our federal aid program. Over the last five or six years, Lancaster County has continued to aggressively pursue federal aid to expand and pave our roads, especially in our growing communities, with a real focus on safety and school routes. And so, when you look at that, what that is overall, we started off with one project, and that was Saltillo. We now have 12 federal aid projects, so totaling about $70 million. Now, if you roll that back and you get order of magnitude for that, what's being allocated to my department for pavement of new roads, the needs map I just showed you, is about $1 million every two to three years. So, 70 million is just a game changer over the next five or six years for us. And hopefully, it's five or six and not eight or nine. I just want to quickly kind of run through some of those projects. Of course, that is Saltillo Road, 27th to 68th Street. Ultimately, on the federal aid, we feel this will probably end up being a $12 million project, so the largest engineering project ever to take place in Lancaster County. We are hoping to get out and do that in FY '26, although right now, we are still buying right-of-way and getting ready for it. 98th Street, Old Cheney to A. We're still working on, there is a middle mile where we're working with the city to correct some compaction issues with a pipeline that was put in that corridor. We do hope to get that open before winter. 98th Street, A to O, is another significant project. We think this project will probably be somewhere also in that $12 million, 10 to 12 million range. Opening this corridor is going to be a game changer for East Lincoln. It will allow you to get off Highway 2 at 98th Street and drive all the way north to Adams Street, which is great news for all of us. And then I'll say, except for one thing. So, when we get that open, we know that the bottleneck will be at Adams to Highway 6. And so, that will be our challenge for the future. But in the meantime, we're going to focus on this. We're also hoping we can get this project to fruition in the next 18 to 24 months. The intersection, safety improvements to 148th and Holdridge. You have heard me speak before that we know $20, $18 that the 148th Street corridor needs $40 million of improvements to meet the growing needs of the county. This is obviously not a $40 million project, but this is focusing on one intersection that's had significant safety problems and adding turn lanes to it. We are working on that this fall, and we hope to be done by winter. And so, that will be exciting to get some improvements in there. South 68th Street is also a project that we've been working on for quite some time. Hey, guess what? Another 12, 13 million dollar project. So, we're not just talking about one of the biggest projects ever. We're actually talking about three or four of the biggest projects ever for Lancaster County. This is safety funds as well as funding from the MPO. This will be funding to widen 68th Street as well as do intersection improvements. Uh, this will be funding to, uh, to widen 68th Street as well as do intersection improvements throughout the corridor from Hickman all the way down to First Road. And then kind of, uh, a new money source that we just recently got the agreement through. And so, uh, if I can just take a quick moment to talk about these agreements, uh, this is a HUD finance project. This is earmarked money, uh, that was acquired, uh, for us from Congressman Flood. Uh, this is an economic development grant, uh, from HUD. And so we're excited about this. We haven't done one of these before. Uh, so that was the good news, right? The bad news is, it took us over two years to get to the point where we finally had an agreement so we could start moving forward with this road. Uh, so some of these processes, uh, do take an excessive amount of time. Um, long-term, the amount of earmarked dollars that, uh, Congressman Flood got for us was $4 million for this project, so it is gonna be significant. Uh, Northwest 56th Street, a project that we hope will be able to construct, uh, or at least start construction in 2026, is that mile of, uh, road north of I-80 and kind of south of Holdridge Street. Hey, it might be a couple hundred feet from the zone in the city of Lincoln, from the city of Lincoln Lemons. Uh, again, I don't know how that happens. Uh, in any case, uh, this is MPO dollars, and I'm, I'm certain that, uh, the city will take it as soon as we've had it developed. And of course, I'll also remind everyone that everyone who lives in the city also lives in the county, so if we can pick off these roads that have a lot of, uh, traffic on them and a lot of accident history on them and improve them, it is a benefit to all. Uh, North 14th Street, uh, is another safety project that we have where we're, um, coming in and doing intersection improvements as well as widening it. It is also a narrow corridor. I don't really know why. This is kind of, um, what we call systemic, uh, funding for this road. It doesn't technically, it doesn't have as high of an accident history as 148th or, uh, or Saltillo Road, but it still meets the criteria to need the improvements. It's a very narrow road. If you drive it, it, it can also be, um, unforgiving if you have a moment where, uh, you're not, you're not paying attention. And so, um, this project will probably most likely happen, uh, 2028 or after that. You may have heard me talk about, uh, we call it the South-South 68th Street. Well, this is the North-South 68th Street, so this is Hickman to the edge of, uh, where it's been widened out and has shoulders currently. Uh, it is, uh, under two miles, about a mile and a half. Um, this is also, um, it's, it's also highway safety money as well as money that comes from the MPO funding using to just, let's just get this whole corridor done. I didn't wanna leave just this mile and a half, uh, randomly north of Hickman, but it had to be a different project just by the nature of it. Um, also, uh, newer to our federal aid list, uh, we are working on getting north 162nd Street, um, uh, Highway 6, actually all the way to the county line, but in this case, Highway 6 to Davie, uh, into our federal aid projects. The reason this is so significant is, this road was actually graded as a farm-to-market route in 1974. So I still have people who call me up, and they're like, hey, you bought the right-of-way from us, you graded the road in 1974, you never came back and paved the road, we're really mad at you. And I'm like, well, I'm kinda mad about that too. Uh, the importance of this road is, is once it's paved, it gives a back way in to, uh, Ashland and Greenwood, as well as another connection, uh, for the Farmers Co-op, all the way into Wahoo from Waverly. So this is a significant corridor, uh, for the citizens of Lancaster County, broken into two projects. Um, we're proposing, this is a federal aid, a job with an 80/20 split. We have some classification deals we're trying to work out before the end of the year. Um, and then we have the North 162nd Street piece, which you're also gonna see, uh, we've been told that this, uh, has also received a HUD grant for economic development, and this was also a Congressman Flood earmark, um, which is significant to Lancaster County of a $5.3 million. And so, major corridor, overall corridor investment, we expect to be well over $10 million. Um, significant paved corridor for Lancaster County. I wanted to talk about, um, the Lincoln East Beltway too. So in my overall plan, uh, is continuing to buy pieces of right-of-way, uh, as corridor protection comes up for the Lincoln East Beltway. I'm hopeful that we can actually find a way to start on some design for the East Beltway, um, whether that be NEPA or additional corridor design. Uh, current, uh, estimates for the Beltway, uh, we had updated actually about, uh, 12 to 18 months ago now, and you may recall from that 1996, 1996 corridor study estimated that that East Beltway, um, Commissioner Campbell, did you read that study back in the day, 1996?
[laughing]
It's a bit of a long read. Uh, it was estimated to be, uh, a little over, uh, $100 million back in the day. Of course, it's more like $600 million now. Uh, it is five miles longer than the South Beltway. Uh, this would complete the, the, the loop around the city of Lincoln. Uh, it's significant to everyone in our community because our city is one of the largest cities in America that doesn't have a Beltway around it. And so this is something we need to fix. How long has it really been being worked on? Well, Arthur Edgren was the county engineer in 1927. Um, he actually passed in 1930, and he proposed what he called a fine drive, which was Cotner Boulevard. Cotner Boulevard was, he referred to Cotner Boulevard as his child, actually, but he has this in his files. Um, Ed Zimmer recently did, uh, did a little, uh, video on it, and I, I kind of clipped it from Ed's video, and I, I told him I, I had, uh, I had borrowed it from him. But, uh, Edgren proposed a loop around the city. Uh, he is also the person who originally gravelled our roads because he called those all-weather roads, which some of us might debate that if we live on gravel roads, Ms. Joy.
Yes.
But that being said, I mean, I think it's interesting that we're going on 100 years, 100 years of trying to get a Beltway around, um, the city of Lincoln. Uh, Ed Zimmer, like, has talked about that, like, Edgren died in 1930, um, of gallbladder disease, unfortunately, but had he lived, uh, I think he would've gotten this loop in because he was dedicated to it, and so I feel just as dedicated to it today. Um, as we look forward, proposed projects from, uh, FY 2026, listed, uh, in that 1-in-6 plan shown, uh, shown here in a tabular form, um, and represented in the map, both, uh, construction and engineering, uh, and right-of-way acquisition, uh, shown in the, uh, out years, the years two through six, really continuing on with that federal aid because I don't currently have any, any, uh, funds allocated, uh, uh, local funds, anyway. Uh, lastly, I also wanna talk, uh, to you a little bit about, we did receive a BRIC grant. Uh, we're not really sure where that federal grant program will go in the future. Uh, the BRIC grant in particular, uh, was received so that we could study drainage basins, um, outside of the city of Lincoln in that three-mile, uh, zone. What we're trying to do is study all those bridges and really focus on areas where we know we have channel issues and create a top 25 list to really focus on that in the future. Uh, we also, I think we're 18 months away from, um, 18 months ago, received a Safe Roads for All grant, and it's been interesting. Um, we had submitted it, and then we had heard that the program, uh, was gonna be, um, was not gonna go forward with the new administration. Then we heard it was gonna go forward, but we needed to change our agreement. Uh, we made the required changes to our agreement, and now, um, we've been waiting about four months to hear from, uh, from what's, uh, from what's happening. So, uh, we hope to, uh, to be able to go forward on that. That study would allow us to comprehensively study, uh, driver safety and driver safety patterns in Lancaster County, 'cause we do know in Lancaster County that we have some challenges, um, with excessive speed. They're 55 mile-an-hour roads. We know that we many times have, uh, that 85th percentile speed over 70, which is significant. Um, we also know that we have some challenges with seatbelt use as well as driving under the influence, um, which are also, uh, unfortunate. And then lastly, I'd just like to say, if you ever have any questions about county engineering or any of our programs or what we're thinking going forward, you're always welcome to contact me. So with that, are there any questions?
Commissioners?
Yes, uh, when you talk about widening some of these roads, uh, is that including the shoulder? I'm thinking of bicycles, of course.
Uh, we're working on that. I mean, the challenge for us right now is, we have the road, the roads that we've received safety funding for, North 14th, um, South 68th Street and Saltillo have drivelanes that are, uh, less than 11 feet, so 10 to 11 feet, which gives, uh, bicyclists absolutely no room at all. Um, a standard modern road should be, uh, 28 feet wide, um, with a rumble strip on the side. Now, it's always interesting, nobody ever wants to hear the rumble strip when their tire hits it, but people are fine, um, dropping their car off the side and then getting it all muddy when it's, when it's wet like this, which I've never quite figured that out, uh, Mr. Rodenberg. So, uh, as we go forward, we are working on getting shoulders and, uh, paved shoulders incorporated, uh, to these roads. We, we're not necessarily there yet, but it's a question, um, we are asking for funding on, and we're continuing to ask for funding on. But I haven't, I haven't gotten a yes on it yet, but I haven't stopped asking.
And the rumble strips would not go all the way across the shoulder?
Yeah, because, uh, bicycles don't like rumble strips, so, uh, yeah, rumble strips are usually six to 12 inches, so, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's have testimony and support.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Katie Bullmeyer. I'm from the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce. That is 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 100. I'm here in support, first of all, just, uh, appreciative of Engineer Dean, Dean Man's leadership in our community. We're very grateful to have all of her expertise, and then her staff has been incredible to work with as well, so we really thank her for everything she does. Um, but lately, we've been having a lot of conversations in regards to the East Beltway, so that's why I'm here today, is just to really prime and prep you guys, and I know that that is not necessarily, has large plans in the 2050 Comm Plan or the LRTP, but we really wanna make sure that we're bringing this discussion in front of everybody's face every chance that we can. So that is just why I'm here today, in support of continuing that conversation, and we are so grateful for Engineer Dean Man's help on all of our committee meetings for that. So with that, thank you very much for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other testimony and support? Testimony in a neutral capacity? Testimony in opposition? Staff questions?
No.
No? Okay.
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second, Edens.
Shelley?
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Reiman Yost.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move to approve Comprehensive Plan Conformance 25008.
Second, Edens.
Okay, discussion. Who'd like to go first?
Uh, I just wanna thank the, uh, County Engineering Department for the work they've been doing, and as hard as it is to fight for dollars, um, it's, it's exciting to see the numbers come down on areas of projects that need, uh, work. It doesn't mean we'll ever get to, um, what we want, but, um, I think there's been a great deal of work, especially trying to find grants out there to assist us in these efforts. So I applaud the Engineering Department.
Excellent. Any other discussions?
That was, presentation was outstanding, and I fortunately get to drive a lot of the roads that you presented, and it's exciting to see the Rock Creek Bridge back on, you know, getting going again, and what you're going for from a department. It's excellent stuff out in the county.
Okay.
And I would just, um, sort of reinforce what, uh, Commissioner Campbell said about just the numbers going down, so I appreciate that. You know, ever since I've been on the Planning Commission, I've seen, you know, the, first didn't know what scour critical means, so I appreciate that. But seeing those numbers go down, which obviously is a safety concern for the city, so I appreciate that. And then 100 years is a long time. We have to figure out a way to get that east side, um, you know, up, so, so thank you for your, for your help there.
Yeah, excellent hard work there. Any other comments before we move forward? Shelley?
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Reiman Yost.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. May we have a motion?
I'd move to close, uh, our two, adjourn the meeting.
Second, Edens.
Ball.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Reiman Yost.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you.